We will call to order and declare a quorum of six trustees. Would like to welcome everyone to the meeting of the College Station Independent School District Board of Trustees. We were elected at large to represent the interest of our community and our state in educating our students. Our mission for our students in this district is success each life, each day, each hour. We adhere to all pertinent laws, policies, and procedures in posting agendas and conducting our meetings. The detailed agenda information was made available to us at least 72 hours in advance, and we have all come to this meeting informed and prepared. We have just completed a workshop meeting where we heard reports and discussed much of the information needed to make decisions in either this meeting or in upcoming meetings. This is a meeting of the seven trustees, or six tonight, in a public setting rather than a public meeting. As such, public comment is included on the agenda at a specific time and requires us to listen rather than take action so as to abide by the Open Meetings Act. We are pleased that you've taken time this evening to join us. We are very proud of the school district, and we thank you for your interest in and support of our students. And before I turn it over to you, Mr. Martindale, I did want to read something from our seventh trustee, Ms. Nolan, who is not able to be here tonight. She is in quarantine. She is fine. She's been in close contact with someone, though. And she wanted me to let everyone know that she misses being here. She will be watching on the live stream, so howdy, Ms. Nolan, and that she is looking forward to learning about all the great things going on in the Fine Arts Program. And she said she'll see us in two weeks. Mr. Martindale.
Thank you, Ms. Nugent. And we can all wave to Ms. Nolan now so she can see us. I would ask Ms. Barrington, principal of Greens Prairie Elementary, and Mr. DeRahy to come forward, principal of Rock Prairie Elementary. They're going to introduce their students that will lead us in our pledges and moment of silence this evening.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm Jeff DeRahy, principal at Rock Prairie Elementary. Mr. Nugent, Mr. Martindale, everyone around the world, I have the honor of introducing two of our fine 4th grader wranglers. We're going to first introduce you to Julia Horak. She has been a wrangler for five years, ever since she was a kindergartner. Her favorite subject is social studies. She doesn't have a least favorite subject. Outside of school, she is a volleyball player, and she is in our recorder club. It's a virtual club that our music teacher teaches. And when I asked her what she didn't like about being at home all last spring, she said, "I had to be quiet when I was at home sometimes." And finally, I asked her, "What do you want people to know about you that I didn't already ask?" And she says, "I want people to know that I can be counted on." And I agree with that. And next up is Nathan Overby, also a 4th grader at our campus. Nathan's been with us the last two years, so he joined us just in time for COVID. His favorite subject is math. Outside of school, he plays football. He's a wide receiver. He doesn't have a least favorite subject. The hardest part about being at home last spring was working on the computer all day. And finally, he didn't have anything that he wanted anyone else to know, so I asked his teacher, and she said, "He is an amazing citizen on our campus." So, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Donna Barrington, the principal at Greens Prairie Elementary, and I have two of our 4th graders here. These students were born when Greens Prairie opened, and I know that because they're Archie Parr, right here. His dad is a 4th grade teacher, Chris Parr, and then Maddie Ryan. Both of her parents work at Greens Prairie. Mr. Joshua Ryan in the back, he is a 4th grade teacher, and her mom, Sarah Ryan, is a 3rd grade teacher. So, when they were born, we celebrated not only opening Greens Prairie, but the birth of these fine two students. And I'm going to let them introduce themselves because they like the mic.
Maddie, you could go first.
Hi. My name is Archie Parr. I am a 4th grader in Ms. Gibbs' class at Greens Prairie. My favorite subject is science. I really love it. And my hobby is reading. I just really love reading.
My name is Maddie Ryan. I'm in 4th grade, and my favorite subject is music. And my hobby is I like to play with all my pets at home.
And tell them what you're learning to do, like you did it tonight. What are you learning to do?
Tonight, I went to my first horseback riding practice.
Okay. And I got to brag on her one more thing. So, tell them the ultimate, this is the best. You're wearing a basketball game, and the buzzer rang. Y'all were tied, right? Y'all were tied? No, you were not tied, right? Okay, tell them, because this is the ultimate.
I made the buzzer beater shot that tied the game.
Buzzer beater shot. Isn't that awesome? That's great. Okay. All right. So, we are going to, they're going to lead us in the United States pledge and the Texas pledge. Here we go.
Please stand.
Please stand. Hi. My name is Archie, and I will be leading you in the United States pledge, salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, one and indivisible.
My name is Maddie, and I'll be leading you in the Texas pledge, salute pledge. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Please join me in a moment of silence.
You may be seated.
This seems oddly self-serving. School Board Appreciation Month.
Well, we can pass right over it if you want to, Ms. Nugent. No, I'm kidding. Absolutely. January School Board Recognition Month. A couple of different activities that you may have already noticed. Beginning last Tuesday, and on Tuesday and Friday of each week throughout the duration of January, we have posted a specific social media posting thanking a particular board member for your service. And also, if you will notice, in our facilities at our schools throughout the district, posted on the marquee, our school is expressing their thanks as well. We wanted to do a little something that captured more time and just show our appreciation for all your time and effort and energy you put into serving the faculty, staff, and students in this community as a whole. So, you're probably wondering way back, Chuck, well, that was three or four weeks ago. It's been a little while. When Mr. Glenn, we go text you and ask you what your favorite book was from K through 12. So, we want to do something different this year, but a number of our campuses do this as well with our faculty and staff, is we've taken those book titles, and we're donating those to a particular school library in honor of your service as a trustee. So, we have those that are going to libraries, where we bought you a commemorative copy as well. So, we're going to distribute those at this time. So, we'll start with Ms. Nolan, since she's not here. So, inside of the book in the cover, I'll read one. It says, "In appreciation of your service to the students and staff of College Station ISD, a copy of this book was placed in the library of Southwood Valley Elementary School in your honor, presented to Geraldine Nolan, January 19, 2021, Little Princess." So, we'll do that for each of you. We'll get this one to Ms. Nolan. And Mr. Glenn, can we get pictures of each of these? Do you mind coming on and taking a picture? All right. The next one, maybe you recognize this one, Ms. Green. This one is in honor of Ms. Green, and we'll be placing it in the library of Cypress Grove Intermediate. Ms. Green? Yeah, please. I'm going to insist that this is a photo opportunity, so I'm preparing you now.
Is that the Red Farm group?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't say, we're the Red Farm group.
Oh, my goodness.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Mr. Ben, Animal Farm, and we'll be placing this in the library at College Station High School in honor of your service on the Board of Trustees. I just want to know if you guys planned this. An animal farm, Mr. Hall.
We did not plan it.
Come on up.
I thought I might have switched up the books.
And this is going to be in the library at A&amp;M Consolidated High School.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
The Chronicles of Narnia. Ms. McAdams?
You chose wisely.
I did. I chose wisely.
And this one was placed in the library at Oakwood Intermediate. Lord of the Flies. Mr. Horak.
I think we could have called that one.
And this one is A&amp;M Consolidated High School. And last but not least, Mr. Nugent. The Old Man and the Sea. And this one is College Station High School.
We wanted to do something a little bit different. Again, it stood the test of time and truly recognized your service and you giving back to the school district and the community. So, we thought this is a great idea, and those will be placed in the library tomorrow. So, thank you again for your service. We would accomplish nothing without all of you and your guidance and support. So, thank you very much.
Thank y'all so much. And I am officially glad we did not skip that. All right. That takes us to C3 to recognize the artwork that is in the back tonight. That's provided by Greens Prairie Elementary and Rock Prairie Elementary. And then, next, Item D, the Consent Agenda. That will include Item G, J2, J3, and J4, a very light consent agenda. Is there anything that, is there any item that any trustee would like pulled? Not at all. Do we have a motion?
I motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
All right. With a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right. The motion passes 6-0. That will take us to E1, Board Directions and Reports Announcements. Anything from any committees in the last month?
Mr. Horak threw me to the wolves and let me experience DEIC by myself. No, it was, I mean, it was just main three. DEIC was very simple. It was superintendent update. We've all heard. He shared, Mr. Martindale shared with the group. Then we, as the committee, voted on the calendar, as has already been voted or described to us in the workshop, and we'll go on to that later. And then, the final thing was, we had the district improvement plan. We broke out and the groups discussed and came back to a committee, and we'll continue forward. So, it was productive, but more to go.
Both Mr. Horak and I attended the teacher incentive allotment meeting. We met last week, and we'll meet again next week. It's a very busy group. I mean, they can do a lot. We have an hour and a half meetings. And I will say, if I haven't said this before, both Ms. Hickman and Ms. Perry are very, they're very well-prepared and run a nice meeting with a lot of people in there to get things done. And last week, the goal of the group was to answer this question. What would you accept as evidence that a teacher is highly effective at improving student performance? So, you know, as part of the teacher incentive allotment, part of it is, how can we see if a teacher is really impacting the student performance? So, we talked about different ways to gauge that, you know, pre and post tests. On something like MAPS would be one that we talked about a lot. That may not be applicable in something like an art class or orchestra class, you know, or career and technology class. So, we talked about, you know, what is the right way to gauge that student performance? So, there is a suggestion that came out for the groups from that day, and it's out circulating out with the schools to, you know, to get feedback. So, if you are, you know, the teachers, this is your chance to look at that and get feedback to the group. And I guess I'd just add, it's complicated. And, you know, the rest of y'all will hear more about that as we, you know, we present to the board, but it is a pretty complicated system to really help us gauge our teacher performance. And just the one last comment is, it hinges on also that the legislature continues to fund the program. So, we will all just hope that that is a piece of it as well. Anything else you want to add?
No, we hit off.
All right.
Mr. Martindale and I attended the Intergovernmental Relations Meeting today at lunch, and the sole topic was COVID and the response and the numbers here in Brazos County. I did take fairly good notes, and if you'd want to see them, they're currently lodged between the cab and the bed of my truck. As I was getting out, they slid down in. But generally speaking, they, you know, a lot of the numbers, which everybody, I think, is pretty familiar with as far as hospitalizations and the issues that we're facing in the community. It was both, and Mr. Martindale may have a different take on it, but it was both a disheartening and a positive meeting at the same time. I believe that the, you know, the county, the former chief deputy of Brazos County Sheriff's Office, Jim Stewart, is kind of heading up the coordination of vaccine, the vaccine for Brazos County, and that seems to be moving in the right direction. And I'm sure we'll get an update on our numbers here at the school district from Mr. Martindale. But that was really the sole, the sole topic. However, if there's anybody on the board or otherwise who have any topics that they would want brought up to the Intergovernmental Relations Committee, which is, you know, the cities, the school districts, the county, and so forth, please let us know. Mayor Mooney specifically asked if there were any other topics that we'd like to cover in those meetings, so we can, we can definitely pass that on and potentially cover them.
With Ms. Nolan being absent, I'll do my very best to give an Education Foundation update, since I'm on the board of that. Hall of Fame has been moved from, I think we moved, we moved it from beginning in February to March 1st in conjunction with the reports and everything with COVID going on, decided we'd probably be best in pushing that back. Expo Center. And then, the scholarship banquet, I believe, is scheduled in April. The good news on both of these events is, if you'll recall, last year, Hall of Fame was a virtual event, and scholarship was a drive-through event. So, we are slowly getting back to normal, because we're going to see people this year, hopefully, knock on wood. So, looking forward to that and honoring our seniors at Hall of Fame, and then, obviously, all of our scholarship recipients, and getting those out there. Chrissy's Closet still rocking and rolling in the best way that we can this year with COVID, and it has actually been a success and has been very fruitful for the community and those within the district. So, continue to look for volunteer opportunities. They fill up fast, but if you see them come up, those will be posted. And then, the other one, 50 Men Who Can Cook. I regret to inform the community, we will not be hosting 50 Men Who Can Cook this year. We had hoped to move it to April. With the logistics of it and all that, it just did not come to fruition. So, we, as a committee and board, made the decision to cancel the event this year, as it just did not seem right to try to force something into the community. And while it's a big fundraiser for us as Education Foundation, we understand safety and where we're at on that. However, I can tell you that February 2022, I know that sounds weird, but we are back on schedule for February 2022. So, looking forward to that, hoping to make it bigger and better, and regaining some normalcy by then. So, that's the plan.
Without any further reports, Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ms. Nugent. Just a few data points and our instructional model's numbers. Returning second semester, when we started on January the 8th, we had 86.5% of our students back on site. Of course, that's 13 and a half virtual. When we started the school year back in August, August 18th, we started actually with 67.9% of our students on site. So, that's an increase of almost 20% through the course of the fall. Our active case numbers, interesting, I was speaking with Dr. Whitbeck this morning and see if she saw the same trend we have just since the end of last week and the three-day weekend with numbers, and they have. Last Friday, or at the end of Friday, we had 91 active cases. As of 3:15 today, we have 67, and that is 27 staff and 40 students. So, we'll knock on wood and see if that holds. If you look at the calendar, we've been back a few weeks now since the holiday break, so we'll see if that has any influence on the numbers. And I echo what Mr. Ben said about our Intergovernmental Council meeting today. A lot of conversation around mass vaccine distribution. And it reminds me of a question I was asked at an interview with KBTX a few, the Thursday we returned, and one of the questions was, you know, the hope, the seeing the light at the end of the table, the tunnel. And my answer was, you know, absolutely. However, we have to remain diligent in the efforts that got us here to get to the light at the end of the tunnel. So, I know our folks, our faculty, staff, and kids continue to stay focused on the protocol that we have in place. Other topics to mention later this evening, I know Ms. Straz is going to speak with the board about the possible chartering of a bomb planting committee that would meet and have some conversations through the course of the spring. We did approve a facilitator to engage with for strategic planning process. Ms. Perry and I have a planning call with them, or kickoff call with our facilitators Friday, so look for additional information coming out after this week to kind of get that process going. And yes, it's January. However, we're already starting the process of student course registration for next year, and we will share staffing and budgeting timelines with faculty and staff tomorrow on our virtual success team meeting. So, while January, we do go ahead and start planning for our next school year. Celebrations, I don't know if Mr. Eeks was going to share this later, but I'm going to beat him to the punch if so. So, my apologies. Celebrations, we found out just this weekend, I believe, if that's correct, Eric, for all state in Fine Arts, we had three of our students receive all-state recognition in band, three in choir, and four in orchestra. And I think that's an increase over prior years. Is that right, Mr. Eeks?
Yes, sir.
So, that's always a huge accomplishment for our students to achieve all-state honors. Upcoming activities, we've heard some of these reports this evening. Teacher incentive allotment committee meets again on January the 28th, PAC on February the 4th, and teacher incentive allotment again on February the 9th. So, y'all are going to be busy, Ms. McAdams and Mr. Horak. Those are the upcoming DEIC on February the 10th. And again, kind of as we gear up with strategic planning process, we'll add those dates to our calendar and upcoming events as well, so we can plan accordingly. So, Mr. Nugent, that's our, my update and our upcoming events.
Well, it's a good one.
Thank you, sir.
It's a good one. Thank you, sir. Takes us to F, Hearing of Citizens. Ms. Horn, do we have, there is none? So, that will take us to H1, Receive Report Related to CS ISD's Fine Arts Program. Mr. Martindale.
Mr. Eeks, our director of Fine Arts is going to share with us. This is one of our regular program updates provided to the board. I believe, Mr. Eeks, this is the first one for Fine Arts officially in the existence of College Station ISD. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yes, it is.
Very good. Hey, no pressure on that, but we're looking forward to your report, Mr. Eeks. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's certainly my pleasure and an honor to get to be here with you tonight. You know, just like Mr. Martindale had just said, this is, this is the very first time that College Station ISD has had a Fine Arts report for the school board. So, I wanted to take a little bit of a different approach with this. So, without further ado, the State of the Arts and College Station ISD. There we go.
K through 12th grade. The College Station Independent School District offers a wide variety of Fine Arts programs available for students in pre-K through 12th grade. Our rich curriculum includes structured and successful courses in art, band, choir, dance, orchestra, and theater. At the elementary level, we introduce our pre-K through 4th grade students to the value of the Fine Arts through dedicated art and music instruction. We have successfully integrated this instruction into our popular computers, art, music, and PE rotation for all elementary students. Each elementary campus has autonomy in how they implement the camp rotation, but in general, each student will take part in art and music one to two times a week. At the intermediate school level, we offer art, theater, music, and orchestra, beginning at the 5th grade level. We also offer band and choir, beginning at the 6th grade level. In our middle schools, we continue to offer art, band, choir, orchestra, and theater with the addition of drill teams as an after-school activity. At both A&amp;M Consolidated High School and College Station High School, we offer art, band, choir, dance, orchestra, and theater. At College View High School, we offer art and a newly created guitar course, which is unique to this campus. The guitar course is in its infancy, but we are seeing great interest and progress with these students. Most of these offerings at the high school level have expanded courses with AP and advanced distinctions for interested students. The overall budget for the College Station ISD Fine Arts Department is just over $829,000 for the 2020-2021 school year. This budget is broken into three major categories. Fine Arts Campus Budgets, Central Office Fine Arts Budgets, and Temporary Worker Budgets. The campus budgets take up the largest portion of the funding, and they include the money allocated to each program. These budgets cover critical needs like transportation, contest fees, supplies, and some other equipment needs. The Central Office Fine Arts Budget helps support professional development experiences for our Fine Arts teachers, and it funds various equipment and supply needs as well. The last budget category is dedicated to covering payment for temporary and hourly workers, such as piano accompanist for our choral programs, color guard and winter guard staff, and other hourly workers that might provide specific instruction to our high school marching band programs or other music programs in the district. Beginning this school year, the Fine Arts Department implemented a major shift in the Beginning this school year, the Fine Arts Department implemented a major shift in the financial handling and structure of operations. All budgets now flow through the central office and are set by the Director of Fine Arts. This new structure has allowed the Director of Fine Arts greater ability to cast more equity across the fine arts programs in the district. All fine arts programs are funded based on the following guidelines. Population, program and transportation needs, UIL and other related fees, materials, equipment, supplies and general demands and expectations for each fine arts discipline, along with teacher and director input and involvement. This new structure has received overwhelmingly positive feedback from our fine arts teachers. This new flow-through budget plan covers our fine arts programs at the secondary schools. Elementary programs are still funded at the campus level. We expect to move the elementary budgets to the central office level in the coming years as well. The College Station Independent School District has a total of 77 campus fine arts educators. This number breaks down to 10 elementary music teachers, 10 elementary art teachers, three intermediate music teachers, 14 intermediate, middle and high school art teachers, 10 intermediate, middle and high school theater directors, nine intermediate, middle and high school orchestra directors, 13 intermediate, middle and high school band directors, five middle and high school choir directors, two high school dance directors and one guitar teacher. Student involvement in our fine arts programs remains impressively high. This school year, we have 11,783 students involved in these programs across the district. That number breaks out like this. We have 5,439 elementary students taking art and music through their camp rotations, 2,187 secondary students taking art classes, 1,392 students taking theater classes, 831 students taking orchestra classes, 817 students taking band and color guard classes, 481 students taking general music at the intermediate school level, 408 students taking choir classes, 218 students taking dance classes and 10 students taking guitar at College View High School. Perhaps what I am most proud of is that our fine arts students achieve notable success at the individual level and group level every year. Because my time is limited for this presentation, I will focus here on some of our major successes that illustrate the talent and dedication of our students and faculty. All of our music programs earn consistent, superior and excellent ratings at UIL concert and sight-reading events, as well as consistent, superior ratings and placements at marching band competitions. We lead our music region in the numbers of students who are selected to the Texas Music Educators Region and All-State Ensembles for Band, Choir and Orchestra. Our theater programs and choir programs produce outstanding musicals, and our theater students are very successful in the UIL one-act play process, often advancing to some of the final rounds of difficult competitions. Our art departments have high numbers of students who compete in the visual arts scholastic events, with many students earning the highest possible ratings for their work and advancing to the state-level competition. Our dance programs earn consistently high ratings and grand champion distinctions at their events. Both of our high school winter guard programs earn high ratings at their competitions, as well as remarkable color guard caption placements when they perform with our marching band programs. The College Station ISD Fine Arts Department has been honored with two outstanding awards for the first time ever. The first award was the Best Communities for Music Education Award, sponsored by the NAMM Foundation. There were a total of 754 school districts from around the country that earned this prestigious award. Of that, 87 were from Texas. The award program recognizes outstanding efforts by teachers, administrators, parents, students and community leaders who have made music education part of a well-rounded education. Distinctions are made to districts and schools that demonstrate an exceptionally high commitment and access to music education. Shortly after receiving the Best Communities for Music Education Honor, College Station ISD also received the Texas Art Educators Association District of Distinction Award for the very first time. The TAEA District of Distinction Award is an annual recognition program created by the Texas Art Education Association to honor school districts that are leading the way in the visual arts. Only 43 districts met the high standard and have received the outstanding honor for the 2020-2021 school year. Put simply, our future goal for the district's fine arts department is to continue to grow, both in terms of student involvement and program recognition. We are fortunate to be able to build on a history of fine arts success here, and I know that we will continue to see remarkable achievement. To that end, we want to increase the number of students making all-state programs and state-level honors for one-act play and the visual arts scholastic events. And importantly, we want to continue earning the state and national awards that we have received for the first time this year. I have full confidence in the students, faculty and staff involved in our programs across the district, and I am excited about our future as part of a district that understands the value of fine arts education in the lives of all students. As a growing and successful fine arts department, we face three main challenges going forward that I would like to bring to your attention. These are issues encountered by most thriving fine arts units, and I believe that solutions can be found so that we have continued achievement. Our first challenge is maintaining our high level of activity with our current performance spaces. The fact that our performance spaces are a limiting factor for us proves how active and popular our programs are. Both of our high school auditoriums have relatively small audience capacities, and they are limited on stage and backstage space. Our growing theater, band, choir and orchestra programs encounter difficulty with scheduling events and performances. And at times, this challenge has a negative impact on our other fine arts programs. Our second challenge is related to the aging equipment and technology being used by our fine arts programs throughout the district. Much of this equipment and technology simply needs to be replaced, as it often can no longer be repaired. Some of our programs have grown so rapidly that they have to rely on equipment that is old and not functioning well in order to allow more students to participate. Through the years, it has been difficult to maintain and replace aging equipment because of high costs. For example, the average cost of a tuba on a school bid is close to $7,000. Obviously, the expense of the kinds of equipment we have in our departments creates a unique challenge. However, this challenge is also proof that we are reaching increasing numbers of students each year. Our third major challenge is staffing in a few areas. We are behind the normal staffing models in a few of our performing arts areas. This understaffing limits some of the productivity in programs and affects the level of instruction we provide students. The fine arts department needs, for the future, directly address the challenges we have. We need to address our performance spaces, replace and expand on aging equipment for our students and programs, and address some of the staffing issues we have in a few of our fine arts programs. In summary, I'd like to reiterate that CSISD has created a flourishing and successful fine arts program for all of our students. This is in large part due to the forethought of great leaders, administrators and faculty who understand the impact fine arts education has on lives. As our district grows, we have been able to offer a diverse curriculum, and we have created innovative ways to introduce the fine arts in unique settings, especially this school year. Our students have consistently risen to the top of region, area and statewide contests, and our band, choir, orchestra, dance and theater programs have all achieved noteworthy success. Because of the support of our administrators and the efforts of our fine arts teachers, our district was one of 87 in Texas named as a National Best Communities for Music Education, and we were one of 43 Texas districts named a TAEA District of Distinction for our visual arts programs. Our goals for the future include increasing the number of students who rise to state-level competition and to maintain our state and national awards as a district that values the fine arts. Like all growing fine arts departments, we face challenges, such as performance space issues, aging equipment and staffing needs. But I'm confident that we will find creative solutions and continue to provide an enriching experience for our students of CSISD.
All right. Thank you very much. That was, I can just tell you right now, that was such a joy to get to put together, and especially since so many of our ensembles here this fall have done lots of virtual events. I have learned Adobe really well. So that's been a lot of fun. But with that being said, you know, I know that that was a lot of information in a relatively short amount of time, but if there are any questions, I would be happy and would love to, love to answer any that you might have.
I just saw the mask off, so I thought you were going for it.
Go ahead.
So in regard to performance spaces, what's the, what do we need?
Well, I would just personally, from my own heart, and I know that all of our other fine arts teachers also feel the same way, we would love to see some sort of a district performing arts center built, you know, in the near future. That facility needs to be large, it needs to be very versatile, you know, probably have an auditorium capacity of, you know, maybe 1200 to 1500 seats, you know. Also, it would be wonderful to have, you know, art gallery space, lots of multipurpose conference rooms, just a very, very large and very versatile facility that can be used for all the fine arts, but I think it could also be used for even prom, you know, if we had a big enough space. So that would, that would be something that would be just an absolute wonderful thing for our district.
Question on the staffing, on one of the other three bullets. Is it, are you saying we, you need the budget for staffing, or you have trouble actually finding some of the key people that you need to fill the roles? Just to clarify.
Well, really typically, it's just going to be a matter of finding the money to fund these extra positions. You know, College Station ISD, as you can see, really, really supports the fine arts well, but, you know, we're always looking to continue to expand and to get our staffing levels, you know, comparable to maybe perhaps what other districts might have.
Question for you. You said your dream is to have 1,500 people to be sitting. Have you approached community stakeholders such as the Art Council, Brazos Valley Symphony? Because I know that would be a space they would want to use too, because the symphony only uses it six times a year. So rather than the district being upfront in the cost, maybe that could be something you could reach out to the shareholders and see.
Absolutely. I think that this possible facility could be just a wonderful tool that many, many people could use. Yeah, just like the Brazos Valley Symphony, heck, even maybe some ensembles at Texas A&amp;M too. But yes, I think that's a great idea. I've had, you know, very casual talks on and off with people over the years, but I believe if this possibility were to come, and as we get more serious about things, we would definitely bring those discussions to the forefront.
No more question, but just to comment that it was well overdue for the fine arts department to, you know, present to the school board, or long overdue. Obviously, I mean, I feel it's a huge part of the learning and the growth of our students. I mean, I'm very fortunate that I've got to see so many of the great things that, and I know many of y'all have too, you know, got to see so many of the great things that our students do. I think of the, I mean, some of them are my own kids. I guess from the six you listed, I think my kids, what, they've been in art and theater and orchestra and band and choir, you know, everything but dance. But I mean, I want my kids to be in those things because I see what's, what the positives. I mean, you work hard at something, you get better, but you also work so much of that you work in teams and groups, and that's such a great experience. So I want those same things, you know, for all of our students, and it's great to see the numbers that you presented up there. So.
Absolutely.
Thank you, and keep up the good work.
Thank you. All right. Well, thank y'all very much. Appreciate it.
Definitely not a question, but I did want to say that we are just delighted that you are in the position you are in now. And your leadership has just been, it's been outstanding. And having seen through, you know, the last nine years of my kids being there, going to art shows and seeing what your crews are able to pull off at pep rallies and at Friday nights, but just in the last year, right before COVID hit, but I just thought it was fine arts finest hour with the high schools and even the intermediate schools were putting together the musicals, but to walk in and to see the teams that Ms. McAdams was talking about, you had theater, you had choir, you had the dance crew, you had orchestras working together and putting on musicals that, I mean, were professional quality. And there was such a buzz in this town about that. And that starts in your office. So thank you so much for your leadership.
Well, thank you very much for that. You know, we've got fantastic teachers, we've got fantastic educators, you know, we are all a team and we all have a shared vision. And so, you know, I just truly thank all of our district teachers for their help and support and guidance, you know, within the fine arts program, but also that their guidance for their students as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, definitely the best, finest arts presentation we've ever had. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Eric. Well done.
All right. And that will take us to H2, Consider Approval of the 2021-2022 CSISD School Calendar. Mr. Martindale.
Thank you, Mr. Nujin and board members. We heard from Dr. Tremble during workshop. She gave us kind of a detailed report on calendar development, where we landed. She's going to give us a little briefer presentation now and look for approval on the 21-22 calendar. Dr. Tremble?
Good evening. I do come to you this evening with a recommendation that the Board of Trustees approve Calendar A for the CSISD 21-22 calendar. Calendars A and B were posted on the website from December the 2nd through December the 18th. We received 2,893 responses to those calendars. Calendar A had 62.7% of the respondents' votes. Calendar B had 32.3% of the votes. On January the 13th, the District Education Improvement Council met to consider the data, and they voted unanimously to put forward Calendar A to the board. So at this time, we come to you for a recommendation and approval of Calendar A for the 2021 school year.
Move to approve Calendar A for the 21-22 school year.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there, are there any, is there any further discussion questions? All right, with none, with the motion that has been presented, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion passes six to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that will take us down to business. J1, Consideration, Discussion and Possible Approval of a Charter for a 2021 Bond Planning Committee. Mr. Martindale.
Thank you, Mr. Nujin. Ms. Strauss has been sharing information with us regarding our conversation around possible bond development since I think back November, October-ish. As per policy though, to move forward or pull together a committee to consider and provide any type of recommendation to the board, we'd have to charter that committee. So Ms. Strauss is going to give us kind of a, just a brief overview and the purpose of a possible charter committee for this.
Thank you, Mr. Martindale. If you will recall, there it is, I'm sorry. If you will recall, in November and December, we presented some information, a debt summary to you, and actually some very good news in that College Station ISD is positioned very well with their debt. That's also contributed to that is the refunding of some debt that we did and some early payoffs. And you've got some debt that's falling off in the coming years. So you're positioned very well. And then in December, we provided you with an enrollment and demographic report. Part of that report showed that based on enrollment, we don't see any immediate needs for additional school buildings. But unfortunately, there are still other things that continue to go on. Deferred maintenance, you think I kind of planned these presentations today with the technology and the fine arts information that was shared, but there's equipment with the way buses, technology, these fine arts instruments and those types of things that the general fund just can't support on a regular basis and to get us where we need to be. So those needs continue. So those needs continue. So one of the things that we talked about is the potential for a bond in 2021 to hold us over until that new facility is needed, and we know more about our enrollment this next coming year. So part of that next step, in order for us to research it more and see what we might bring forward, or if we even will, would be to get a committee together. And Policy BDB Local requires that you, as a board, approve such charter. And in that charter would be the purpose of the committee, the responsibilities of that committee, and the expected timeline. So the charter that's being recommended here basically just states that out, and that the committee would come together, they would study the needs of the district with regard to those items that I provided you, a potential timeline for that bond, and if we should move forward, they'll bring that recommendation to you. We would be looking at gathering names for that committee in the next two months, and hopefully, on the March board meeting, would be bringing you the membership for your approval. They would do most of their work in April and May of this year, as we meet with them and lead them through what our needs are, let them review that, provide you with updates along the way, with a final of a recommendation probably in July of whether you should call that bond election. The deadline would be in August, but it's just after our August board meeting. So somewhere in July or August, bring forth, if we're going to proceed, a recommendation for you to call that bond election.
Amy, just touching on something, this is for renovations, capital needs, deferred maintenance, things that are not going to stop regardless of whether we build new facilities or not.
Yes, sir.
If we held on these types of things for a future bond, then it would simply add to the price tag that might come out of a future planning committee that would include new facilities as well.
Yes, sir. That's exactly right. And we've got needs roofs, HVACs, you've got some older buildings that carpet, those types of things, so it would add to the next bond. But we also are in a very unique environment of a very low interest rate, so we would be able to take advantage of that as well if we proceed. So are there any questions?
Since I'm the new kid on the block, just since I walked in, if I recall correctly, what seemed to spur the idea of the bond was the October 26 meeting of transportation program, where it was displayed that come the 2021-22 school year, we're going to have roughly 53% to 55% of our buses that are over 10 years old.
Yes, sir.
So that's what spurred this. And that we require one to six months to one year to order the buses in advance.
Yes. Buses normally take at least six months from the time that you order them to the time that they are here. We are in very good shape right now, but in two years, we will have a very aging fleet.
This is us being proactive, the district considering this, just considering, us being proactive and knowing we would have to first get a bond approved and passed, but then we know we're going to have six months to a year out in ordering.
Sure. So yeah, if you look at a November bond, for our buses, we probably would not arrive until the summer of 2022. So they would be in line for that 22-23 school year.
You would sell the bonds in January, if approved, if recommended by the planning committee and approved by the board, and approved by voters in November of '21. A whole lot of ifs in there. You would sell the bonds in January of '22 to secure the funds, and you make the purchases at that time and then six months out. That's where she's coming up with the June.
Okay. Thank you. And I just, I think maybe I was thinking it, but we need to, as an administration as well as a board, be cognizant that COVID has put a great financial strain on those. So just as going forward, as you said, we're meeting immediate needs rather than it becoming a wish list.
Yeah, I guess I'd add that obviously the buses were one specific item that was identified, but I also just look at it that we are overseeing financially a whole lot of capital outlay in our 19 schools and other buildings that, you know, that we're responsible for. And I certainly look at it with my own property, you know, if you want to, you don't want to let those maintenance things sit around for too long. It's our responsibility to keep those buildings in good shape, and that takes money. So that's really how I look at it, and we haven't done a bond since 2015. I mean, we've obviously been spending some of that money over the last few years, but, you know, those repairs and those needs will always be there when we have that many facilities. So I certainly, I support at least calling the committee, chartering the committee to discuss some of those needs out there.
And the price tag on those maintenance-type items for buildings of our size are very large. Roofs and HVACs are a very high number. You're talking 500,000 to a million apiece. So. If there aren't any questions, I'd ask.
I think we have an opportunity, you know, obviously, to present the charter and just kind of see where we stand, but in addition to just the buses, you know, I'm looking at the purpose, the committee purpose here, facility renovations, deferred maintenance, things like that. You know, Mr. Eeks just talked about fine arts. I mean, there's an opportunity to help out in that regard for pennies on the dollar at this point without having to wait until we have to put the big bond out there, whenever that may be. Yes, it's odd, and the timing probably is not the most fantastic, but at the same time, we have an opportunity to take a great leap forward for our district and our facilities and things like that, along with some of our programs that we have for, in my opinion, a less expensive cost to everyone. So I think it's worth the committee looking at and finding out where we stand and what the thoughts are, and just kind of see what potential needs and projects are out there that need to be pushed to the forefront and solidified now.
Well, we are looking for, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I agree with Mr. Horak. I mean, the chartering of the committee in and of itself doesn't obligate the district to present a bond, or a bond of a particular amount. I know we've talked about various possibilities as far as our debt service and so forth, but considering the issues that, you know, the administration has identified as things that we need to be taking care of, it seems like a no-brainer to at least charter the committee and get their opinion on what, if anything, needs to be done. So I'd be supportive of it also.
Well, we are looking for some action to approve this. We'll need a motion to do that.
A motion to approve the approval of a charter for a 2021, that is 2021, bond planning committee.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, so the motion passes six-zero. We will charter a committee.
Thank you.
And get the community in a room and see what happens. Okay, that will get us to K1. We are going to recess for a few moments to executive session. I do want to let everyone know that with Ms. Nolan not here tonight, she is watching the live stream. We did not phone her in today because that's something that we need to have on the agenda, and we did not know about this until it was too late for that. But we will be having her on the phone for executive session, but just with full disclosure, want to let everybody know that. So I'll go ahead and read K1, and then we will recess for a few moments. The board will meet in executive session to discuss superintendent mid-year review. And what a year it was. The executive session deliberations will be held pursuant to the Personnel Matters Closed Meeting exception to the Texas Open Meetings Act to set forth in Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code. We will be back. I don't expect to see very many of you. All right, so we are adjourned.